We live in a day and age where technology is creating a world without borders, filled with unlimited potential to improve the lives of the people around us. Inovarex Global Health ushers in a new way of leveling the playing field with increased access to quality healthcare services delivered at your doorstep. Our qualified professionals are equipped with state-of-the-art point-of-care testing technology to conduct tests such as kidney function, liver function, electrolyte tests, body composition, hemoglobin, A1C, and many more services with the highest efficiency in delivering results. The addition to our flagship Wellness on Wheels, more fondly known as WOW Delivery Service, brings the entire clinical experience full circle. IGH has remained committed to creating the future of healthcare delivery. Gone are the days of sending loved ones outside the country for basic medical services. Inovarex Global Health offers a new peace of mind and takes pride in delivering the quality of care we all deserve.
For the first time in the history of the Gambia, Gambia Printing Publishing Corporation proudly introduces the Biliumatic Exercise Book Printing Machine. The machine has the capacity to print more than 20,000 books per hour. Yes, 20,000 books per hour. It also prints magazines, newspapers, calendars, flyers, normal books, and all kinds of printed documents plus items at affordable prices. With the Biliumatic Printing Machine, GPPC can now render high-quality and non-size-restricted printing service supply across the subregion. Rush now and partner with GPPC for all your public and private printing service needs. Print with us today and you'd be offered highly professional, reliable, and efficient service delivery by our team of experts. The Gambia Printing and Publishing Corporation is here to meet all demands and is reliable at all times. For more info, contact us on 437 4493 or 437 4402. GPPC is Gambiaan and it's yours.
Honey, did you remind him that the last time he sent the money, it was not enough to buy all the provisions?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to tell him. Are you guys talking about money transfer to buy provisions?
Yes.
But don't you know about Baluwo?
Baluwo?
What is Baluwo? Baluwo is a service that your son can use to send provisions directly to you guys from the shop. And you don't have to worry about the exchange rate.
Tell me how Baluwo works?
It's very simple.
Just log on to baluwo.com and shop or download the app on your phone. You can shop on the website or using the app to buy online basic products for your family and friends. With Baluwo, you decide what your money is spent on. Your money, your choice. Buy online products for your family and friends in the Gambia, Senegal, Nigeria, or Mali. Baluwo, better than sending money.
Good morning, everyone. And first and foremost, I want to thank the... Somebody's asking me that we should start with prayers. So we can all pray in our different ways. I mean, um... I want to, first and foremost, thank my management here for a job well done and also to the INCO management. Thank you very much. This was a very, very long process, but I think everybody knows that with Banyu City Council, the most important thing is always sustainability. We are here today to launch our digital revenue digitalization. And when I talk about revenue digitalization, we mean the whole revenue of Banyu City Council. From rates to the market, to license, and everywhere, even the waste. Because part of the waste, the business people are paying. So, and we deem it necessary to have the revenue digitalized. Everybody knows the essence of digitalization, going from analog to digital. The process is all the same. There is nothing different. The only difference is we are moving from analog to digital. So it means that what you were paying in the market is exactly what you will pay again. But the interest that Banyu City Council will have or the people of Banyu will have, digitalization will help us to fight fraud. Coming from paperwork helps also a lot. Everybody knows when you depend on paperwork, what always happens. So, and the most important, it helps us also to maximize our revenue. So today, we are here proudly to say that we are going digital. Some might say it's too late, but I said no. With us, what is always very important is to make sure that sustainability is done or is under processed. We cannot afford doing anything that after six months, we go back to start something else. So this is why I said thank you and thank you very much to the management who worked tirelessly to make so that we go digital. And to the INCO company, we are also very grateful. And this is on behalf of Banyu City Council and indeed the people of Banyu. We have started this project as a pilot at the market, and it works very well. The revenue increased significantly. I don't want to start giving a certain percentage, but I can comfortably say at least 20% of the revenue goes up. So, and I'm sure everybody will agree with me that everywhere in the world now, people are going digital. And Banyu is not an island. We also want to be part of the process. How the world is moving, we also move along with them. So this is why we are here today. As I said, digitalizing our revenue to maximize the revenue, to go out from paperwork or from analog to digital, and indeed to make so that we fight against fraud. So this is why we're here today. And I want everybody to help us to make so that we are successful in this. And as I said, it does not change anything from the process. We are not saying that we are going digital because if you were paying $100, you have to pay $120. No, it's all the same. It's just moving from digital, from analog to digit. That's it. So nothing is changed, and I want to put emphasis on that. Because whenever something new comes, you have lots of rumors going around. So there is nothing absolutely that is new about this other than going from analog to digital. And we have done it. We did this before, as I said, with a pilot with UNDP. And I want to take this opportunity also to thank them because we did it with UNDP at the market and it works. We have seen a significant increase in the revenue. So on that note, once again, I want to say thank you very much. The CEO is here. He might also want to add something on it. And also to tell the people of Banyu, congratulations. And I am so very much proud to be part of this, the part of this process. And this is one achievement that I am very much proud of, that I am really, really very much proud of. People have cried foul about digitalization. And many might ask, why now? As I said, why now? Because we were on the process all the time. And we want to know, we want to have something that is sustainable. Sustainability is key to our management. So here we are now, after how many months? I think after nine months or 10 months, we have been going back and forward, back and forward, back and forward. And alhamdulillah, today we were able to launch it. And tomorrow, we are going live. So alhamdulillah, ma santi yala, bubaha baha badi wahy nyep, jerig yen yef, mankuma ham ham nane, wodigayala, ah, lumay dim tu ti angalarek, damakode buga waha ti 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 olaf. Ah, liyufi inditey moy den yem digital. Digital den yem, te su mane digital moy, den jogi chikate, diyem chileneen. Wai lulu tamit, mi nu ne, koppar binga hamne mom lane danjil ti marsebi, ba mom lane danjil si bitiki, dafa am daro luchi yoku, de de, darayo yoku chi. La won rek, la fane won, mor fane khat, lulu damo kubuga bam tuat, moy ne, Banyu City Council electione reala teli fidef, moy den yon launch pu den digital. Kunekha hamna aduna bilegi, ni moy dohe. Aduna bi nyep fumneka, kunekana fubugina, si analog, dem si 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 lenyuwa, massin, haomanakala kumnawahe, si olaf, den digital. Lulu nagli mi di belemoi, nyu banyanek de yuskeit, beena. Nyar el tamli mi di belemoi, nyu hea fraud. Nyatel, si li mi di belemoi, pur nyu muna egal, su nyu revenue biga hamne mom lane danam, egal kuchiko. Defo neko ak UNDP. UNDP defo neko wa si marsebele ko ema layon, nyu gisne, lulu yoka na nyu, nyar fukipasen, si su revenue bi. Kon lulu mota bega hamne nyu gisne, konnak amnangirin, pur nyu def kuchipasiyep. Nyu def kuchy, baliti, nyu def kuchireti, nyu def kuchipasiyep, paski balit bi, mom etabid business people yu hamne, si en balit bizen bitiki nyu omdey defei, lume ona tutti, lu tutti la barayut, wai nyu omdey defei, nyanga hamne nyone ke chikiri nyu omnyo defei. So pur ma def lulu nu nu, mu leer, lulu mota gana bega hamne def neko UNDP, nyu gisne yoku tela, mota nyu takasi su di galie, pur gisne legi palasiyep, lulu neko buga def, ga hamne kandu de mati sekene, diyel halis. This is Santana de sigerem, INCO company, bega hamne nyu om lane koi, nyu om nyu om lane koi defa noral. Nyu omnyo sing partnership, nyu omnak, gil na lulu fukiwere, majurun nyelentwer, majurun nyetwer, chi ganao, nyu ko jam badiko hall, mar na monaneka, orta monaneka, su nyu deme nyu, dem nyu, dem nyu, belegi, mashallah, merme toga bi nyor. Wainak, nyu baridene la ke luta legi, ahakai luta legi, because sling buga moy, bugo nyu wa na deflo hamne, buinko de feyte, nyati fanre, nyana telefando amati. So moy la tu badiwa sustainability, so lulu daf nyu nyor torop 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 fi. Motah man, summa development, a dedem slowly, because de tamui slow, damo bro slow, ansor. Lo hamne neko defre, damade buga gisne sustainability, mu fa. Kon li, mom lane nyekate, deko def, te inshallah hurabi, elek, sila ador, elek la nyor dor, nyu den, nyu den life. This is Santana, wa Banyu, de wahne alhamdulillah, li de fane kaloh hamne, man luma yitella, luma nehla, because Banyu City Council, allah huli halim, bugona gisne, nyun den nen digital, te alhamdulillah, def neko. Bu, ah, UNDP, biyomi etabid, magaram len santane, paski si nyu omle geki, pilot project, bi nyu omle geki, nyu gisne, def neko ak nyu, sila indora ham giring, bega hamne, mor faneka, kon nyu mitabid nyung len de santan, de len girem, bu 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 baha bha, de wahne liyoku teregla indusi Banyu, do amu daro lo hamne, momla, lor ki Banyu, lulu indi nyu yoke, yoke, yoke tere. Paski te su feke de koppar bini, waro nyuwe, nyuwe nakho, dagagisne nimbal, bega hamne mom gil, mom lane dan de defal, lura lulu lenyodef. Moy nimbal bisi, si nyangu halei, si school physi, ga hamne, Banyu City Council, kunekha hamna, nakala tahawee, bubaha baha bha, si si nyangu domi, kondenchi gina gur gur lual, su feke ne koppar begin nabari. Banyu City Council gisne nakala tahawee, ti japali di gini, di gini ga hamne, ti fan na boneka nak, Banyu City Council, daf de tahau, si si en ber, Banyu City Council, mugeta tahau, ti kholcho, yen nyep hamne lulu, kumputkan, so legi su koppar bini moge na nyue, nu nu lane chegina gur gur lo, Banyu City Council, mugeta tahau, ti football bi, su koppar begin nabari, nu nu lane chegina gur gur loba, baha bha bha. Banyu City Council mugeta tahau, ti afery dinay, ti afery gamoy, ti afery magali, ti afery mepa dib, fasogidi dinay. Si chogi, si en si en Christmas, si en Easter, Banyu City Council mugeta tahau. Banyu City Council mugeta tahau, si nyu ga hamne lek febar, Banyu City Council mugeta tahau, ti luba re, barre, 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 barre. Lulu daf nyu gina dimbele, gina dimbele staff bitamit, pur nyu muna yoka si en feyi, because de halis bidi gina nabari, nyun tami nu nu lenyogisene, mu nu nyo japali, staff si yoka len si en feyi, mu lena yoka capacity budoi, mu lena japali, japali, ti luba re, barre, barre, barre. Konnak, ah, li moy giring, bega hamne momla am, de wahne nak, nyep bugana, nyu japasi. Damakode wa sayoneka, Banyu, moy si en capital, file waro titaro. Kon nyep den chuwaro japani gisne, li, kor hamne yangi gisne, bu koe feyanto, woh konne koe de de, li, ndamlah, na me gambiala, na me Banyu la. Kon manglen de santan, ti de len girem, de wah, ah, ne afir Banyi ni, hamna, momo ne kaney, massin baney kaney. So demonstration bi, denalin bay, nyu om si en bopan yo defko, lo ham ham samba, samba gila ham bopa, nyu om nyu wan nyu, nyu om li, nakala wara, 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 wara demi. Limade wana soy fight korosong, korosong de fight back. So li du yomba, so yen yen nyu subu de japali, paski nyu su toge, su su obese bi, mu nyu hamlinga hamne, moy heutibiti, kon gala yen nyeb manglen dyan, yen japasi, inshallah hurabi. Ah, okay, li pur nyu defko, we have a resolution, council resolution, December, lenko amon, pour finally, pour nyu, nyu munko implement. So I think it's important pour lulu etabid nyu, nyu, nyu hamal lenko. So gamne de fana, ba trailer, na formani kakagoto. So ba sutianin lakato, ngamani kakongofana, man betaya. Barin afte men fola, dora wole moko, Banyu City Council, sama abetale digital. Same abetale digital, digital wole moko, ya lo follow follow, moka paper leta. So paper sign, wote sotola, ning masino, me be yank, molbe wale tala, purkan revenue. Mo lamut, ning dalasitan dalasitan, wo meyalonko, molka ta, marseto. Anin kodomeyalonko, akabo, business manola, anin ala cordalto. Ya lo every year, al nyanta fene san, fene, ah, jola, lem po, al kamengjo. So sae, al tenala koteen kafoko, ah, hin, dalasitan fele, fa pareta, na safayang, hani sae, ning le mu ning. So ning, ala na fasiata, ala na famu moneti, wale moko, abe mol, ma koi la, pur ay revenue, akodo, mol kamensoto, pur ay increase. Bakke bakke bakke, katu janim mol be nyunkela, na try, ane UNDP, na try min tola, marseto. So mol meyalonko ibe marseto, itol fana, yen nyin non ne fa pareta. So wo ye, problem ti ye, fa pareta, na taloko, ikada dalasitan, jo. Moman, ning amanna, purka foko, ning wada dalasitan, sae, dalasimuan ibe wale jola, hani. Dalasitan, ikamengjo nu, wo doron lebi gi. So ning, aninkodo, iman fe no fe sotonyola, nyu anata yorong, purka mol, simben tuya, purka institusono, simben tuya, purka Banyu, simben tuya. So na sae, na ning, ala na famu moneti, wale moko, purka mol, purka mol akodo, siandi. So ni ay geni mol akodo siata, atol fana, ah, help, meyalonko, Banyu City Council ka ke. De maro, meyalonko, mol ka ke, ke la, dingol ma koi, pur ya school physo jo, wo be siyala. Na taloko, ikata ne kenu, sae, mol si tanlu, tanning lulu kenu. Na fa pareta, itoli ay, ay ay de, Banyu City Council, ka religious, ah, mol ma koi nyame, mol meyalonko, ikata gamo, mol meyalonko, eh, ibe, ibe, ibe cho cho to, Banyu City Council ka mol wo mey be ma koi. So ma koi ro, ni kodo siata, ma koi ro fana, abe siyala. So Banyu City Council faran, akamol ma koi, akadinduol ma koi, akakamusol ma koi, ma koi ro, ma koi meyalonko, Banyu City Council nyanta akela, ika kelle. Barisae, na taloko kodo siata bakke, wo fana, abe, abe mol, simben tuya la, pur itol fana, nyes simben tuya bakke. Mol meyalonko fana, ibe dokuwa kela, ikado kuwa ke yank. Itol fana, purke ma koi, ah, kapacity, capacity di la, purke ma koi fana, purke ilay jo siandi, abe wo, la fala, bakke bakke bakke. Environment asa zat fana, wo fana bi gi, katu ning paper siata, wo fana, ika file. Barisae ning, abuka wo, atek wo kenola. So wale mudal, mo bi, wale nata, fen, fen kutuale nata yank, ah, meyalonko, ay juso bole, ay kontan debaki, katu, this was a big dream for me, to, purka yeko, Banyu City Council, attata digital. So sae, purka foko, kodofele ten, woman sotokote. So moma yalonko ikafoko, monatin asae, katu, sustainability, me, ikamem foko, pur na taloko, ah, niya start, akano kuntu, mol, molka jubenu. More than nine months, interning INCO company, be, be kachala, purka jubé. Okay, niya, niya ke, yenakote, mol fana yajubé, hani aliyake ten, aliyake ten, aliyake ten, for sae. Alhamdulillah, abetaya ta, so sama, inshallah hurabi, abe start la pur mu, lieta life. So aliye dua mol la, atol fana, allah, ah, hakobegi, pur atol fana, ya, alien, mol simben tuya, purka yeko, ning, abe, abe, abe soksiplah, alabaraka.
How's your life initiate, Andrew? My name is Mumu Rijalo, and I am a member of Inovarex Digital Company. And then I'll do a presentation of the Banyu City Council Digital Tax App. So in short, I will, since let's do it, I can just bring this device near to show you guys, you see. Okay, what happened is, in the whole process that the mayor has, or the mayors have expressed earlier, is that we have done a process of coming back to BCC, looking at how they are, you know, what their tax collection works, and then, you know, based on the classifications, that is, the evaluation sheet for rates, and so on and so forth. These are the things that we took from them, and then we converted to the digital system. Now converting this digital system is in mathematics anyway. So we are by science, a program, way of doing it. So we, in that process, we built an app for them. So an app is in two ways. You have a mobile app and an interface. An interface is what you have on the... An interface is what you have on the laptop here. This is the face of the digital tax tool that we present to BCC, whereby they will do their digital taxes. So if you look at it here, you will see that you have license, you have waste management, you have property that is rates, and then you have markets, and so on and so forth. So as you see, this is more like a dashboard, where all the facts that are collected, they will see simultaneously, it's like system. So whatever they collect, the mayors, the CEO doesn't even need to call here and there. They can just check on the system and see what is being collected. So these are just one way. So using the mobile app, I'll just do a small transaction for you guys to see. Whereby, the collectors will see their app. First, the app will open, and then, you know, they will log in normally, they will log in. When they log in, they will see the dashboard. So whereby market only access market, trade license access trade license, rates access rates. They do not cross over. So everybody needs to understand it. So wherever, for example, I want to do a transaction. For example, market, whereby for market, there is daily transaction there. You come to the app, and then you eye, for a day like today, you look at the market, it's an Albert Market. You select Albert Market, and then you go to eye, and then you do a transaction. So the transaction ticket will come in this form. So the details in this forms are market ticket original, of course, the invoice number, the amount there is $10, if I am right, that is all market. So it's standard, you issue this to the table, the vendors at the market, and then you move. But license, rates will show a different thing, longer than this, because it contains more detail. So these are the functions. It's actually not difficult, it's really easy. So what is important now also for them to know is, we are just providing the tools and making sure that the system works perfectly and it serves the country, for the city council, the management, the mayors, and the CEO, finance director, who give us this opportunity to work together in order to support the council to develop their tax management system. For a small information, we are not a new company here in Gambia. We are already here since 2018, and we are the one who is managing Brekama Area Council and Basay Area Council. So we brought the expertise to support Banyu Area Council as well, and we are so happy to work with you. And inshallah, we'll make sure to give all the support and all the technical and the ops support to your team, to your collectors, to make all the work, utility, and the transparency for the management. As my fully mentioned, in addition to the figures that we have in, we are providing more in the backend system, as we explained, rather than only the collection of the tax, we are providing another service which is including the system for the management, like HR, like accounting, and like GPR system to check where is the collectors. As the mayors mentioned, her aim to control the fraud or to have more revenue, to increase it, plus for the other stakeholders, they might have access for HR and accounting to help them do their jobs smoothly. In a small example, before we, in a normal system, if somebody asks for a small report, it will take three days. The staff will say, come after three, four days, I have to look for my files. But now, with one click in five minutes, you can have the full year report included in our system. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity. And inshallah, we'll be here always to support you. We have a big team, ops and technical team. Moreover, I am only the one, not Gambian, to manage the company, but we have all the staff are Gambians. So what we need is the youth of Gambia to support the council to improve the product. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My colleagues in the formally team of BCC, trying to see a bad person and all protocols duly understood fully. I didn't, I didn't want to say a word, because my, my mayors said it all as, you see, is the expert on the project. But that just epitomizes, that sees on top of things. Having said that, on the permission of my CEO, and as a director of finance, I just want to summarize the project and where we've been. But I will give credit to the mayor and the management team for one singular move that is having the guts, having the confidence to digitalize. The management team and an institution that is willing to tell experts, "Come in and digitalize by my, my, my revenue", that is a credit that we must give the mayors and the CEO and the management of BCC. What will this do for BCC? One, it will consolidate the revenue. Two, it will increase it. Three, it will cut leakage. Four, it will bring in capacity. Five, you are all very up savvy, you are all digital savvy, is the age. And it's telling the world that BCC is there. And unlike other councils, we only do digitalized trade license or digitalized markets, we've digitalized all revenue centers of BCC. And I think this is a move, as the Lord Mayor has already indicated earlier on, we need your support, because this is Gambia. And if we are able to digitalize, and with management have to get this, only the support of the chamber, the leaders of the mayor, that we want to digital, everything let it be on technology. So there is nothing that you can hide, there is nothing that you can connect or not connect. Everything is on the radar. So I think it's a big achievement, Lord Mayor, in your legacy and your achievements in Banyu City Council. Now able CEO, that if a person, an institution is willing to be there, like Microsoft, be there among the best performance, but this digital. It's a great achievement, and inshallah, next year by this day, having caught 12 months into digitalizing, the stories will be there for everybody to see. The only bad thing is, the person that is not willing to learn, will not be willing to take. But you've seen the advantages that this app and this system bring to. But we've seen the advantages that this app and this system bring to DCC and it's embraced it. And we're not going back, we're going forward. And we have the management and the Lord Mayors of Banjo. We thank you for your time, it's Ramadan and we thank our valuable partners that it's not gonna be easy. We're gonna work with them and it's good. I heard from, we heard from them that they have a like team, because for us, for us, this is the way forward. Not only for DCC, but for the Gambia, even for GIA and everybody. Everybody seeing on the media, digital, digital, it be, hey, nobody can slip behind. The days of paperwork, I think it's over. So once again, Lord Mayor, thank you for the confidence and the CEO in, in us to go digital. I wish you all a better Ramadan and thank you for coming.
Wow. Islamic microfinance is becoming an increasingly popular mechanism for poverty alleviation, especially for developing countries around the world. This microfinance service adheres to the principles of Islam as a form of social responsibility. Yona Islamic microfinance is the Islamic microfinance of choice in the Gambia, trustworthy and reliable. At Yona Islamic microfinance, we provide savings products, current accounts, financing products in conformity with Islam. In addition, Yona Islamic microfinance also offers local and international remittances, Takaful Fund, management of Zakat, management of Awkaaf, trading and investment, and building of strategic partnerships to bring financial services to the doorstep of the poor with donor projects, madrasas, youth organizations, women groups and farmer organizations. Make a choice with Yona Islamic microfinance today. For more information on Yona Islamic microfinance, call 377 2151 or 9832151 or visit Yona head office at Tipa Garage, Bakoti, or visit any Yona branch located countrywide near you.